So we are now back in open session. Wanita, could you please call the roll?
Sherry Kleiber.
Here.
Rachel Morella.
Here.
Jeff Miller.
Here.
Linda Murphy.
Here.
Rich Regan.
Present.
Mary Rose Mandia.
Present.
Same pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda are public comments. We have public comments from Mr. Singh.
Good evening, board members. My name is Rajit Singh and I am the art teacher at Hauser Junior High School. I started teaching in District 96 10 years ago. Before I started here, I was teaching at Patrick Henry, a school in Chicago. At that time, schools in Chicago were cutting art and music and making them into half positions. So finding a job in Riverside was a godsend. I wanted to work in an environment where art was appreciated and important. I was very impressed by the Hauser staff and faculty. The dedication and all that Hauser had to offer its students and community was very refreshing. But over the years, some things have changed. The most recent change is why I'm here tonight. Next year, students moving into 7th and 8th grade that are enrolled in band and orchestra and a foreign language will not be allowed to take an encore. That, to me, as a resident and as a teacher, is not appreciated. That might not seem like a big deal, but it actually is going to affect a large population of students in 7th and 8th grade. Those students will not be allowed an opportunity to take an encore. What I've learned over the years is that students in junior high need a well-balanced and well-rounded education. Students should be allowed to pursue different interests within the school day and not be limited to their choice because it makes scheduling students easier. So I'm asking, please, for the board to investigate some solutions for next year. Just on a side comment, when I was first hired here at Hauser, we had four different electives. We had your industrial arts, we had home economics, we had art and music. And we were on a semester schedule back then. And for 6th grade and 7th grade, all students were enrolled in all of those courses. So you had to take home economics, you had to take industrial arts and music and art in 6th and 7th grade. Then in 8th grade, we moved on to a semester schedule. So students chose any one of those four as an elective and obviously then you would have two semesters. So I think that worked. And I've seen other communities where industrial arts is important. I've seen communities where home economics is coming back. I don't understand why we can't have that here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Your comments are appreciated. We appreciate that. Ms. Ullman.
Good evening. My name is Jen Ullman and I teach 2nd grade at Ames. I wanted to come tonight just certainly to thank you for the many hours you worked to support District 96 students, teachers, and families. You make many critical decisions for our district and you're facing a very important decision regarding kindergarten enrollment and space concerns at Ames. That's why I've come to talk tonight. I'm starting my 12th year at Ames in the fall. It's an amazing school and I feel very fortunate to spend my days at Ames. I know that we cannot support three classes of kindergarteners this fall. One class will be displaced, but I ask that you consider allowing them to return to Ames after their kindergarten year. Having neighborhood schools is something that makes Riverside special. Part of the historic charm is that children walk to and from school each day. Children are educated with neighbors and friends. In the morning, children gather to ride bikes or walk to school. I know 4th and 5th graders who support their neighbors by walking 1st and 2nd graders to school and taking them home at the end of the day. We have space to support three sections of students in grades 1 through 5. I truly believe that Ames students should be at Ames and I ask that you consider inviting the displaced kindergarteners to return to Ames for the remainder of their elementary years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next is Ms. Graham.
My name is Austin Graham. I'm a resident of Riverside. I moved here from Chicago in 2012. I am the mother of three boys, the oldest of which will be a kindergartner this fall and until very recently, we thought he'd be a kindergartner at Ames. So I'm here to address the Ames enrollment issue and I attended the town hall meeting that the district very kindly set up and I appreciate that open dialogue between the parents and the district. But I just wanted to come out here and voice my concern and point out a couple of items that I don't think were readily available or known to new parents such as myself. And one of those is the school board policy, which is Exhibit, I believe, E3, or excuse me, E2 to Policy 730. And I don't think, it doesn't seem to me, based on that town hall meeting, that that policy has been followed or will be followed. And I would just, I respectfully ask that that would be taken into consideration as well as a few other items which I emailed the board so you all have that. But thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. I don't see anyone else on the list here, any other comments. We're going to have comments at the end of the board meeting today. I think that's a new item on the agenda, so if anyone has any other comments at the end, they can make them. The next item on the agenda are changes or additions to the agenda. Maybe Griff can talk about this a little bit. This is something, again, the idea that Griff or Dr. Powell has...
We have a new format for our agenda and I'll talk about it a little bit more in the superintendent's report. But for 20 years, I always added, right at the beginning of the agenda, an option for board members. Should be seldomly used, that if they have a pressing issue and you can get a consensus of your board members. That means at least four of you, at least in the majority, to convince the board president to add it to the agenda. You would put it under new business. You could take action on it that night and discuss it. But there's things that happen between, when we put that board package together, it could be something over the weekend, some issue that is pressing, that you think should be discussed by the board. You should have an option at the beginning of every meeting if four of you think it's important enough to add it to the agenda. Again, seldom used, but it should be there for all of your use if you feel it's necessary.
So as said, are there any additions to the agenda?
I would just like to make sure that we would put out maybe a community, some kind of flash saying, "There's an agenda change," so people could know if they have a question.
I agree with you. We should use, one of the reasons we should probably not use this unless it really is an emergency is you want the community to be aware of anything that we're going to be discussing in advance.
That's the point, we have the agenda.
I think Griff is basically saying that if there's an emergency and we need to add something, this is a mechanism to do that. So the board has that right.
Again, I'm kind of going from memory and I could be wrong, but doesn't our board policy already give board members, individual board members, the right to bring up anything during new business and add it to discuss anything under new business?
See, the order of this is right at the beginning of the meeting, rather than having it just pop up anywhere on the, under new business, is you're really, the board members are telling the board president, "Four of us would like to speak to this particular issue." So you adjust at the beginning of the meeting, the agenda, and then move forward. So it's not, "I got a surprise for you after an hour and a half into the meeting." You know, it's a sort of, you know, it's an organizational kind of a...
Yeah, I'm just saying there's a board policy that...
And this just addresses it and actually satisfies that by allowing you to do it on the agenda.
So I assume there's no other new items then?
Okay.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the transfer of funds from the Transportation Fund to the Education Fund in the amount of $1,533,624. Is there a motion to enter into, to hold a public hearing regarding the transfer of funds from the Transportation to the Education Fund?
Still moved. Second.
Wanita, could you call the roll?
Rich Regan.
Aye.
Linda Murphy.
Aye.
Rachel Morella.
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia.
Aye.
Sherry Kleiber.
Aye.
And Jeff Miller.
Aye.
Motion is passed.
The purpose of the public hearing is to let the public comment on this proposal. Are there any comments, any public comments about moving money from the Transportation Fund to the Education Fund? There don't appear to be any comments, so is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
Still moved. Second.
Wanita, could you call the roll?
Excuse me, Rich Regan.
Aye.
Linda Murphy.
Aye.
Rachel Morella.
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia.
Aye.
Sherry Kleiber.
Aye.
And Jeff Miller.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Next item is the superintendent's report.
I'd like to begin with by thanking every board member for all the, how generous you have been giving us the time during this transition period. Each of you spent at least an hour with us, giving us your perspective, a little bit of history from your point of view. I especially want to thank Mary Rose. She went above and beyond. She actually is my historian, albeit it's only two years, but it gives me at least a little background on what's been going on and, you know, some of the things that we have to address going forward. So thank you, Mary Rose, and thank every board member again. It's been three weeks and I think we have a seamless transition, I believe. We'll find out as the months go, as we go forward. Secondly, I'd like to comment on the new format for the agenda. We have a consent agenda, which we have not used in the past, which is a very common. We did eliminate, which most districts do, the personnel report. And there is, and I think very appropriately, a pressure here to have a lot of transparency. And not only did we, in the personnel report, it's off the consent agenda, but we also allowed for public view, every salary and recommended employee action is right now, for the first time here, under, that public can view it. Just click on it, you can see the salaries, the degrees, all the background information. Previously, that was only for board view. Why should we do that? Well, first of all, it's public information. Somebody can foil these requests. Why waste their time and waste our time just presenting it to the public? And I don't think this board has anything to hide. So to me, that's, the consent agenda, by the way, is not a way to hide anything. You know, anything can be pulled off the consent agenda. Unlike the needing four people on additions and deletions to the agenda, on the consent agenda, anybody that wants to discuss something on a consent agenda can pull that off even if you don't want to discuss it. You want a no vote to be recorded or an abstention to be recorded, you should pull it off. So maybe you don't want to talk about it, but then pull it off, put it under business and then so your vote can be recorded. Otherwise, if you vote no against the whole consent agenda, the public goes, "Well, what really did Jeff, what was he against there?" I have no idea. You know, there was, is he against everything? The minutes? You know, so the whole idea of consent agenda, unlike the additions and deletions, is, you know, anybody can pull off anything. And in fact, we have pulled something off as we get started. There's also a section for board comments, which you did not have before. Of course, you've always had a right by policy, you know, to make comments, but there's a specific section there to, you know, if you attended a band concert, a choral concert, a school play, graduation, which I know you all recently attended, and you wanted to talk about, you know, your perception of what occurred, positive or negative, usually it's positive, that's an opportunity for you to speak to those topics. So it is a different format. There's informational items that, again, the public has access to, that's at the end of the agenda. Very often, there's no need to discuss these. If you really want to discuss them, fine. But, you know, that's just another effort to be more transparent about a whole lot of management reports that should be shared with the board as well as the public. So it's a format I've used for 20 years in two states. I think it works and I think it's more efficient rather than, like on a consent agenda, rather than 12 motions, use one motion and move on. So the last comment I would like to make is, just going forward, is communications between board, staff, and administration. In some contracts, some actual labor contracts, if you have a complaint against the teachers, very often the contract says, "You can't bring that to the principal, you can't bring it to the board, you must bring it to the person you have a concern about directly." And that's really out of fairness, that's the way it should be. However, if the board has an issue, I would like you to direct those issues directly to Pat and me. And why? One board member has no power. It's four of you have all the power in the world in this district, but one person has no power. However, believe it or not, that's not always the perception of staff members. A call from a board member can make some people very nervous, distract them from what we are paying them to do, whether it be teach, administrative school, whatever. And we would like to at least take that concern, we'll get back to you right away and take care of that concern for you. And then that's the way it should be. So if someone calls you, tell them to call us, please, and we'll try to, you know, follow up as best we can. And I think it's a healthier way of communicating. In addition, legal counsel in most districts that I've been in, only the board president or the superintendent calls legal counsel, and that's true with the principals, the administration, not everybody calls legal counsel. However, usually the board president calls legal counsel when they want to get rid of the superintendent, but that's another issue. Yeah, he's made the call. So to me, again, one of the concerns that we're going to talk about later is legal bills. And one way to rein in legal bills, Pat and I have been superintendents for 40 years, we've come across a lot of legal issues that maybe we could resolve before we put it on the legal bill. So to me, that's just in terms of communication, we'd appreciate as we go forward, that's the way we relate between board and administration.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. Those comments, I think, all make sense. Coming to the consent agenda, there is one item that has to be pulled off, which is item number six on the summer 2015 equipment purchasing. I believe Mr. Sellers will, has some modifications to make on that that he'll talk about after the consent agenda vote. Are there any other items on the consent agenda that someone wants to take off?
Need a motion?
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with taking item number six, summer 2015 equipment purchasing, off the agenda?
Still moved. Second.
Wanita, could you call the roll?
Rich Regan.
Aye.
Linda Murphy.
Aye.
Rachel Morella.
Aye.
Sherry Kleiber.
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia.
Aye.
And Jeff Miller.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Do we talk about item number six now or when do we talk about that?
Under old business.
Old business.
Because we've discussed it before, it's old business and you can act on it if you so wish.
Now we have, are there any comments from the REC?
No.
No comments from the REC, thank you. Now we come to the new section of the agenda that Dr. Powell mentioned called the board member comments. I guess I'll start. I attended the Hauser graduation. Sherry was there and Rich was there. It was a very nice ceremony. I'd never been to it before. I think there were about 1,200 people there, but it was very well done. I'd like to thank Mr. Jarakka and Ms. Weston and Dr. Sharmel Lewis and Mr. Gannon for putting that together. They did a very nice job and it was a very nice event.
I would also just like to concur with that. I think it was nice to sit in a larger facility, just frankly, that everyone felt comfortable, they weren't fighting over seats, and it was just lovely to hear what the student who was chosen had to say. Angela Murray, I thought she was so well-spoken and I'm so proud of her. I thought that was just a really neat experience. I have a 4th grader going to be 5th grader, it's neat to see where they're going to be and how they're going to grow up and to have seen some of the children that were there that I know, it's just really special. It's nice to be invited. Thank you.
This also is an opportunity to, I think, raise other issues that are not directly on the agenda. One topic that I was thinking about is, we have a July 7th committee meeting scheduled. It's not totally clear that we need to have that, so I wanted to ask the chairs of the various committees if this is something that they want to do or if we want to consider canceling that meeting. This is probably the only meeting that we're probably going to be able to cancel in the next year because we have a fairly full agenda, a fairly full schedule, so is this something? Do you have, if there's things to talk about, then we should certainly have the meeting, but if there's not a lot to talk about that's urgent, we might want to consider that. So that's something that we're up there.
I'm okay with deferring since I had some presentations from Brian last time.
Okay. I think Merrill doesn't start until after...
Right, I'd like to hear what she has to say first.
So is there...
I think I'm okay with it, but I'd like to just check in with Mr. Sellers.
Okay. Does that, this decision, we have to make tonight?
Well, I don't think he's even in town on that day. Is that correct?
Well, we're still working out that schedule, right? I see some other items that are happening. I don't have anything for us. We have the tenant budget presented tonight.
This is our last.
We'll see how that goes. And assuming that goes okay, then I don't have anything.
But anyway, it's common that boards slow things down one month a year, it's always July. If any time you have a chance to take a breath, it should be July, August. We're gearing up for the school year, we're getting...
If we cancel this meeting, do we have to do it right now?
Yes, you should.
So this is not... So do we have any, what do you guys think? We basically have to decide now, it's not like...
That's fine.
Okay, so should we have a motion to cancel the July 7th committee meeting?
Still moved.
It wasn't about a half a second ago. I see someone's for it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Wanita, could you call the roll?
Excuse me, Rachel Morella.
Aye.
Oh, vice president.
Yeah.
Vice president. Say aye.
Aye.
All right. That motion passes.
It's not money or policy. You can, that's where you go.
And then, did you have a comment about board training?
Yes, I do. I wanted, we have a board training on July 25th. I talked about this with Dr. Miller already. What it's proposing that we do, it's an IASB board member training. And as being one of the two people that attended it last time, my recommendation to him was that we change the topic of the training because what it is essentially is figuring out, how are we going to do committee meetings? How are we going to structure board meetings? Things that we've already done, where we're way past. I put in a request to see if that's, if we can use that day as kind of a kickoff to our strategic planning, to figure out, get some ideas on the table, learn how we do our stakeholder engagement and figure out what our process is and figure out dates and our planning schedule for that.
And also, I'm sorry, also, I'd like to discuss a vendor for strategic planning too.
Yeah, whatever. Or to put it all on the table, just to say, like, make that a day because it's a good time to be able to, when things are quiet, to be able to start in on that.
Just so I understand, so we wouldn't want IASB, it would be just the board to present the...
Right.
Do we currently have someone scheduled?
We currently have someone scheduled.
Yeah, but we haven't peaceful yet. I did call IASB in advance just to see if there was a problem and we are scheduled, but we have not...
You don't want to expend it.
So it's easy to just cancel.
And so that, their agenda was basically structured?
Right. What we've already, I think, you know, Dr. Morella did it right off the bat with committee meetings.
Yeah, we're seeing to be there.
Right, right.
It's fine with me.
Yeah. They do talk about board communication protocols, but I don't know that we need to spend three hours talking about that. We should be able to deal with that differently through some of the other training we've talked about. I agree.
I like the idea of launching right into these strategic plans, which I think is a high priority for all of us and just getting going on that. So rather than spending a lot of time doing other stuff, I like, think it's a good idea. So is everyone in favor of that, of that approach, using the 25th for that purpose?
Yes.
So let's just do that then.
That's a Saturday, right?
Yes, it is.
It's a Saturday.
And it was scheduled from 9 till 12.
Is that separate from our meeting this week?
That's separate from our meeting this week. That's a separate training session.
This is the mandatory, you've got to spend two days.
By state regulation, right?
Okay.
That's just the new board members.
Yes.
New only. No, this doesn't affect you.
I believe day one is the mandatory and day two...
Day two is optional, but encouraged and spirit.
So did any other board members have comments they want to make in this section? So the next item is the appointment of special assignments. There's a number of liaisons and representative positions and I guess it's not completely clear from talking to people whether, how valuable these are. So I guess people's time is limited and I guess, you know, my feeling on this is that if we have volunteers who want to do this and they find, it turns out that it's valuable, valuable for both the committee that they're the representative to and also to the board, then we continue with that and we decide that these are not necessary, we can go that way too.
I guess I'd like to just again, offer a little bit of historical perspective and I have, which I shared with Jeff earlier today, these are all things that were done, you know, even prior to meeting, on the board, and we just continued them. And then after a while, I recognized that the liaison, you know, in theory, we had a board liaison, but the board liaison never gave the full board a report, we never saw agendas, never saw minutes, so I began to wonder what the point was. But in particular, I'd like to talk about the REC liaison. I actually had talked to our attorney about this and my understanding is that meeting's an operational meeting and not really something a board member should be at. I don't know, Pat or Griff, do you have any thoughts on that?
You might want to ask Bill.
Right, I was saying, should we ask?
Do you want to have a board member liaison to your committee meetings?
You're on the spot, folks.
I know.
You're on tape, you can't take it back.
You can't ever take it back. I think there are times when it's valuable to have a board member there. It doesn't need to be every meeting, probably not.
Shouldn't it vary on, you know, the agenda, what are the topics?
I think that would be... Maybe you could indicate to whoever the representative is, if this is important or not.
Yeah.
Okay. And that would be, I think that would be...
So it would be as needed?
As needed. Okay, well, I was going to volunteer for that position myself, so you can just basically...
Does that change your mind? I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
So the next, next...
I just also have one other question. Since it is, you know, in compliance with regulation for two board members to be together, would it be nice that if a board member is able to attend, that they be a second person? Is there any reason not to do that?
You want to have two representatives.
If one's available, still a primary representative whose responsibility is to show...
I would say if someone wants to do that, yeah, that's, I think, where, my concern was more that we're kind of tapped out with all the stuff that we shouldn't be doing and so, but if people have extra time, that's certainly fine, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm not saying all the time, it's just somebody's available.
The next liaison is the PTA, PTO liaison, and I thought Linda would be, if you would like to do that, be very...
Sure.
The Discipline Code Committee Representative. This is another one where it might be valuable to have a board member on the committee or might not be, but did you want, would you like to do that if you have time, Rachel?
Sure.
Okay.
You have a big stick.
And again, if you find, if you find, the committee finds it's not valuable to have you there, then obviously just let us know on that.
Okay.
And then we have the Technology Steering Committee Representative, which I think you've been doing. Would you like to continue doing that?
I would.
Okay, good. Okay, so we're set on that. So the next item of business is the kindergarten placements for, this is a discussion that we've been having with Ames and Blithe and Central, actually it involves all three schools. So we had the, the two superintendents had the forum on Thursday, as some of the commentators mentioned, and would you like to maybe report to the board what your thoughts are on the whole issue or...
Well, I think we've gone back and forth and we've talked to, you know, both Todd and Kizmir about this. Right now, we've got historical woes with the kindergarten group.
Right now, we've got historical woes with the kindergarten group. We've got 109. Typically, at this particular time in the, in the summer, it's usually about 25 more. But there still are obviously some potential difficulties with the way it's shaking out. Hollywood is kind of an entity unto itself, or 19 there, and, you know, that's why they really haven't been considered in the mix because you've got a distance problem, but not really distance, it's more of a safety factor, you know, in crossing First Avenue. What we're planning on doing is we're going to get the updated, the most updated list we can possibly get, and then Dr. Powell and I are going to be looking that over. We've had some conversations again with Todd and Kizmir. We've got a pretty good direction at this point of where we're headed. We hope to utilize the policy that was referenced as best we can. Obviously, the policy talks about this happening a little bit earlier in the year. We were surprised by that because when we had the town hall meeting, I don't think any of us totally read that one little line in the policy that suggested we were behind schedule.
So you're referring to basically the, what says, basically by the end of the spring quarter, if there were enough spots in the school in question for the people who had registered by then, then those people should be notified then at some time shortly thereafter.
Yeah, and we, I think we can still utilize that and probably make that happen. And our goal is to do it sometime in the next week or so. Hopefully, everybody by the end of next week will have been given some kind of an idea where their five-year-old will be going to school in the fall. The only difficulty is we don't know how many little munchkins are out there, you know, that haven't been identified yet. And, you know, that could skew things a little bit, but we think we can handle all of those. It's much easier to do it this time because the number is lower.
It's pretty low.
It would have been a very complicated problem at this point if we had another 25 students on the list.
So, right now, we see 44 at Ames that have registered, 13 at Blythe, 33 at Central, 19 at Hollywood, so a total of 109, which is extraordinarily low at this point. We have been planning on eight sections of kindergarten, which we've had for a number of years now, with the numbers we have now, we're pushing, we're not even at six.
Six.
Six, very light, very light.
Light six.
Yeah, so it's a very unusual situation, not something we planned for. However, as Mr. Pat mentioned, typically over the summer, there are a number of, you know, people move in, and, you know, there's maybe 20 extra people we should be counting on getting, so these are not the final, this is not the final story. But I think your proposal, from what I understand, is that we stick, we stick to our current policy.
You have a very common sense, practical policy and procedure.
Agreed.
And I think if we follow it, and I don't think we have to make any changes, modifications at all, I think, you know, that's the, that's the only way to go forward. Which, and right now, we're behind schedule more than anything else. The violation was.
That we didn't.
Three months, we're two months late.
Yeah.
And our objective, very honestly, and we'll get to this later on in the agenda, our number one priority was to identify two really good candidates for the two principalships. This now, I think, becomes our number one item.
Right.
To be able to see if we can work this out so that everybody will be as satisfied as they possibly can.
So the policy basically states that if we can't get everyone in the school where they're registered, which is the goal, is the optimal goal, then we basically look at proximity. We say, we try to find people who are as close as possible to the school where we do have space, and we do that until we basically have enough spots, basically. So that is, that is the flexible policy. And that's what you're recommending that we basically adhere to. And what does, what does the rest of the board agree with that proposal, or?
Yeah, and I heard several parents mention that as well, that geographic location should be considered, and I agree with that. I mean, as much as possible, I think they should stick with their home school if we can do it.
That's what we're going to attempt to do.
I think we need to follow.
Having been a kindergarten mom, it's stressful. They're tiny, they don't know where they're going, you want to show them around, and it's nice to.
Being a mother of a five-year-old is a challenge, without having to worry about where to go to school.
But, right, and then to have to drive them versus walk, like, I moved to Riverside, so I could walk, and I know there are people that did that also, so that's important to me.
And again, hopefully, this is number one on the list starting tomorrow morning, and we'll work through the list. Hopefully, hopefully.
And we can start by asking for volunteers, correct?
That's exactly, that's the first step.
So there might be some people who want to move to Central.
This week, we're going to put out emails and ask for volunteers, step one.
Right.
And then step two, we'll take a look at proximity and the flexible board boundary as the policy dictates.
Yeah, so I think, I think we need to stop thinking about it as moving a class, and more so just following the policy of.
Following our current policy, which was worked out over a number of years. I mean, it's not something that was slapped together.
There's no way we can fix, get a fixed set of sections at every school and always know how many kids are going to be in each area.
We are going to move on this, and what may happen is once we have hit our limits in certain schools, if they have not registered for kindergarten, they're going to go where the school, where there's openings.
Right.
You know, and that's just a reality that, you know, in order to be fair about things.
And again, what we'll do next year is we'll start this process very early, letting people know right after the first of the year its kindness.
No, we'll guarantee you won't hear about it next year.
Right.
That's our goal.
There won't be any agenda.
Although I have to say, having visited Ames and Blythe and the others, I was very impressed with both of those schools. Just, of course, all of them, but just considering, I think, you know, they're both wonderful places, and I would be happy sending my child to either of those. I hope people understand that these are both nurturing environments, and of course, you know, you want to go to your home school, but I have to say, I was really impressed with both places.
So do we have a consensus then on that policy?
You don't have to take action when you tell us to follow the policies in place. That's it.
All right, so can I actually, now that actually we're talking about space enrollment, I realized that I forgot to actually do something in the previous part of the agenda. Can I go back?
And the consent agenda?
Not the consent, no, the one before that.
Board member comment.
I forgot I wanted to appoint another committee, actually.
Okay.
Which is basically, I think that we should set up a space and enrollment committee to basically study this issues in depth. This is, requires a lot more work, specialized work than just the general strategic planning, which will, you know, be a lot of work in its own right, but this is a very specialized set of questions about what should we do about our enrollment and space constraints across the entire district going forward. There was a study that was done in 2007, I think Rachel was involved in that, very detailed. They look at all possible options, but I don't know really whatever came with that. So I think, you know, we could put together a committee that studies this, and maybe starts with looking at that, and then comes back to the board with some recommendations about, you know, how we should utilize our space more effectively and deal with some of these problems, you know, in a rational way. So I was thinking that we could have a couple of board members, maybe ask Randy Brockway and Linda Murphy to co-chair that committee. Any board member could join it. I would ask the two superintendents to help put together the rest of the committee, maybe all the principals, some teachers from each school, a committee of parents and community members, and maybe, you know, could start, start meeting and then, you know, come up with some recommendations. Does that seem like something we want to do, or?
I think it's a great idea. The only thing I would add to it is that, you know, we recently received that demographers report.
We would add that in there as one of the things we should study.
Absolutely.
Very good.
My expectation is that once we put this committee together, enrollment numbers are going to plummet, basically.
It's like bringing an umbrella in the rain.
The only other thing I wanted to point out about that, we had this problem in the past with the technology steering committee, is that when any more than, any more than two board members attend could be an issue. So we just need to be mindful of that.
My understanding is that the Open Meetings Act requires that even if there are no board members, if it's a public committee, they still have to notify the public in advance, 48 hours in advance.
As long as they get a notice?
That's what I, is that correct?
Okay.
Is that, is that incorrect?
No, I thought there was some distinction between the superintendent's committee and a board committee.
Well, for example, when we had the meeting, some board members attended that meeting, and I just said they could not participate in that meeting. They had to be there as observers only.
Sherry was talking the whole time.
Oh, yeah.
No, but I mean, that was just a, you mean the town hall.
Yes, right.
But this is a little different. It's going to be a finite number of people down, a working, kind of a working committee. So are you going to notice it up?
If there's more than two board members, well, we will put a notice on it regardless.
Regardless, right.
Because it's going to be.
Because we.
I think we also need to think about, the more people that join, the less effective sometimes the working committee is. So I personally would think we would want to clearly, you know, figure out who's on.
Decide how.
Less is better. Yeah, because sometimes, you know, we're really just trying to dig deep and figure, you know, do some research, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a good idea to, even if it's a working committee, to put a notice on there. I don't know if you'd use Board Book for that, or, but.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
All right, good, we'll do that then. The next item on the agenda is the tentative budget and a resolution authorizing the preparation and publication of the tentative budget. So basically, this is not approving the tentative budget, this is just basically authorizing its preparation and publication so that public can comment on the budget. So is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the preparation and publication of the tentative budget?
So moved.
Second.
Juanita, can you call it all?
Sherry Kleiber?
Aye.
Linda Murphy?
Aye.
Rich Regan?
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia?
Aye.
Rachel Morella?
Aye.
And Jeff Miller?
Aye.
And the motion is passed.
Next item is the personnel report. Is there a motion to approve the personnel?
Well, wait a minute.
Oh, there's two items.
We have two items, we have to remove.
And. The, there is like L, was it?
Under E, Jennifer Hellrich, Hellrich, .5 kindergarten at Blythe Park. We, since we do not have the enrollment at this point for that number of sections of kindergarten, we will put that on hold. This is a person that has a full-time job in a fourth grade right now, so we're not canceling a contract. We're simply not adding that kindergarten section at this time. So that would be removed.
This LE2.
And we're also recommending you remove L, reappointment of district office staff and salary recommendations.
Right.
That would be removed. Let's see, I think. Pat, check with me, I think we are.
That was it, right? So the only two?
Yeah.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve the personnel report as presented, with the exception that we are taking off items LE2, which is the hiring of Jennifer Hellrich, and item LL, which is the reappointment of district staff for 2015, 16?
So moved?
Second.
Juanita, can you call the roll?
Sorry, any discussion, any discussion? Could I just comment on the, you're now employing two principals?
Yes.
And I'd just like to tell the public, the Hollywood principal's name is Kimberly Hefner. We're very excited. She has 11 years' experience as an administrator. She had six years' experience as a teacher at Hauser, a language arts in Spanish. She was a nationally board certified teacher while she was here. She has been a principal for four years. She literally has more principal experience than all our administrators currently. Well, it's not Pat and me yet. She's not at the 90-year yet level, but we're very excited, and we had parents and teachers and support staff and administrators involved in the process of hiring, and I think she has support on all levels. And so we're really excited to welcome her to District 96. Starting on July 1, because she's a real professional, she said there'd be some transition in her own district. She doesn't want to walk out cold on them, and, but she'll be in here very, you know, right on July 1. And rather than inviting her to the meeting tonight, I thought we'd have a meet and greet at another time where you can have some quality time with her and get to know her.
Right.
So, that's, and.
And my objective was to find some candidates that are plenty of women in mind, so that people wouldn't talk about bad. The recommendation for the Hauser principalship is a wonderful person, as you can see in April, May. No laughs, but that's okay. Griff and I, just to explain, we went through applicant tracks and literally went through about 130, 140 applications. There were some people that applied for both jobs, so that wasn't really the total number of people that were candidates. We screened it down to about eight to 10, did some phoning, and did some interviews that way, and then brought in, basically with the Hollywood job, there were five final candidates. I had four for Hauser. The Hollywood thing, it was comprised of basically the same thing that Hauser was. We had parents, we had teachers, we had a school secretary. It was everything from, basically soup to nuts that way. And in the case of the Hauser appointment, one of the things I was looking for was stability. None of the four candidates, the final candidates, had less than seven years in their present job. April, May literally has 13 years of administrative experience as a dean, as an assistant principal, and we do all the vetting, that, we dig down pretty deep. I talked to about eight or nine different people, from the union building rep, to the head maintenance man of the school, to literally three different administrators that were her mentors that are now seated superintendents, and I couldn't get anybody to say anything negative about her. The only one that wanted to was the union building rep. And what she wanted to do was, well, if I say bad things, will you not take her? And it didn't work out that way, and I think we've made a couple of districts very upset with us because I think we have identified in a rather quick process, two really great candidates that I think will give you a lot of stability, which hasn't existed recently. And I would be, I told the board that I really believe that five years from now, if Griff and I are allowed to come back at that point to visit, we will still see these people in their positions, which I think would be a wonderful thing for this district.
Well, thank you, Mr. Patton, Dr. Paul, for actually screening through all those resumes and finding two very highly qualified people in a very short time, and we're very excited as a district to welcome them and look forward to them joining. We're also sad to be losing Juanita in November. She's resigning to go out to visit her California, live with her family in California, so we'll be, we'll be hiring a new executive secretary. We're posting that soon, and Juanita will be helping to train them over the next few months. Is there any discussion, any more discussion about this item?
I'm so excited.
Is there a motion then? Do we have a motion?
We have a motion.
Okay.
Sherry Kleiber? Rachel Morella?
Aye.
Linda Murphy?
Aye.
Rich Regan?
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia?
Aye.
Jeff Miller?
Aye.
The motion passed.
So the next discussion is the public display of legal bills. So one of the, a very large, not very large, but a significant item in our budget is the money we spend on legal bills. And it's always seemed to me that we should be as transparent with people's money as possible, as the public's money. And so I'd like to have a discussion about whether we should put the totals of the legal bills on a monthly basis on the website, or put the legal bills themselves, or maybe include them in the board packet each month, or what we'd like to do. The law firm says they can give us the legal bills in a format that is already pre-FOIA-able so that basically they can be handed out. So this is, this is one, you know, one thing we can do. And the purpose again is basically, when we're spending a lot of the public's money, the public has a right to know, basically, how we're spending money. So that's my.
I don't think, I don't think there's any disagreement with that, and I don't think the board was actually seeing the legal bills either. So this is actually a way for the board to be able to see it. I guess my only question is, are the legal bills themselves going to be more meaningful? I mean, they should be a management report where you're actually able to monitor and manage it.
We could basically categorize things and say, we spend, we spend a certain amount in this category, a certain amount in that category, and that's more, that's more meaningful than just looking at the bills. I agree with you.
Well, even the way they're prepared, they're bulk billings. I mean, I saw one time, it said, I had this discussion with the head of the union, and I never spoke to the head of the union ever in my two years. They're bulk billed, they just, so they don't really tell you anything.
What the law firm says they could do is they can categorize things in a certain, like a half dozen categories, like FOIA, like general matters, like special ed, like negotiations, things of that nature. And then we could just, basically what we could do is we could just put the totals in each category on a running basis and include that in the board packet that's available to the public to see, and then everyone knows how much money we're spending.
I would put it under information items. You don't have to discuss it. You could pull it off and discuss it if you wanted, but that could be just a monthly report.
How would the bills and also what we post deal with personnel matters? Because a lot of it is personnel related, so how would that?
It'd be a category, I guess.
It'd be a category, so that, that, there'd be no private information on there.
We have to ask them to draft a contract that would be a personnel matter that they would bill us for.
All right. Yeah, I don't think anybody's got a disagreement. At least I don't. I don't want to speak for everybody.
I must tell you, this is the first board, and I applaud you for your transparency, that I, I'm aware of, that would actually do this. David, you've been around a while, and Pat, you aware of any other board that does this?
Yep.
So, you couldn't get a stronger message to the community that you want to be transparent and open.
Well, that's our goal, that's our goal, so.
Than some, than issue.
Is this moving forward, so starting?
Moving forward, basically, yeah.
Yeah, we're not going to go back to a year ago, no.
No. I just wanted to say, is there a way we could break down what general matters is? I don't know what that generally includes.
I think my understanding with the general matters was just the general kind of stuff that a school district would have, you know, to do with the lawyers, so I don't know.
If you're on an hourly, there's some, some legal firms have retainers, but, and I don't think this one does. So if you're on an hourly, if there's a phone call from the superintendent about just a very minor issue, then they throw that under general matters.
Got it.
And that's sort of like the catch-all. However, I think if we gave them six categories, we'd force them to put them in those six categories for public review.
And again, negotiation and special ed, those would be two of the.
Too special, right. FOIA is another one.
Right.
Personnel-related items.
All right. I think that's fine.
Okay. Then the next topic is the use of surveillance cameras in the school. We talked about that a little bit at the committee meetings a couple weeks ago. I think the way we left it was basically we were going to include that as part of our long-range strategic planning, to the degree which we want to have cameras, where we want to have cameras, whether we want to have cameras. Is there any further discussion about that right now, that people wanted to discuss it further, or should we defer that to long-range planning?
Same here. Kind of our goal and our vision, and how we see the culture of our buildings and the management for our safety perspective. I think it's something we need community feedback on. Do they want their children, you know, how do they want, how do they want to go?
I think the recommendation originally was to look at a few external cameras. And, and as I mentioned, this is somewhat like Mary Berry.
I think that there were internal and external with your proposal, was it not, was there not?
Was there a few internal also?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then it's morphed into fewer and fewer, and literally just kind of a certain amount of general coverage on the outside of each building, I think is the latest thing to be there.
I guess.
Did, go ahead, give it a second.
Well, there's been requests for this to be investigated. So one of the, one of the concerns was, was an appropriate scaling of camera installation. the concerns was, was an appropriate scaling of camera installation. So, we, we went from an initial, in March of 2014, investigation of 34 exterior cameras that was quoted at the administrative level, and we had three companies provide us with some pricing. In March of 2015, we had a company come in and give us some advice about interior and exterior, and they, their recommendation was for 21 exterior cameras, and they also, I think, maybe went a little far in terms of the 77 interior cameras, so for a total of 98. Most recently, recently we said, well, let's, let's, let's hone in on this a little bit more, and the company has given us pricing for 14 exterior cameras that would be considered bare-bones. None of these are, you know, necessary to bring forward for board action until you fold into the strategic planning process, although 14 is, is really bare-bones. Another reason why I wanted to do this is, and it really is free to ask a contractor to come and give you pricing and look at your facility, I wanted to make sure that we were clear on our unit pricing of cameras. So, they're coming in 16 to, $1,000, $1,600 to $1,800 per camera, so we could do all buildings at the exterior level, which are bare-bones 14, for between $20,000 and $24,000. So, just as a point of information, that's, that's kind of the, the exploration of the topic that's taken place. Thank you.
I just want to mention, I pulled up a study from the National Association of School Psychologists, and I'd like to maybe have us review that. They also talk about security measures like officers and metal detectors, which of course we're not going there, but they have a few notes on kind of the climate of the school, and how, whether they're internal, and does it affect teaching and the environment, and I'd like us to maybe review some of these points.
So, those are all things that we should discuss in depth when we do the strategic planning.
Yeah, I would, I would love to get a little bit, because I know this conversation started before a few of us were here.
Right, and I understand.
I would love to get a, a history of why we started looking into this, just, just so I feel like I, it's just not, I don't know, I feel like there needs to be a compelling reason to, to put them.
I can give you, that brief overview is that, how it came about, I believe, is when a student ran off campus, and I think that, and I think that it was Randy basically driving, we need cameras, you know, if we had a camera, we'd have known which door she went out of, and we might be able to retrace the steps of what had happened. That said, however, and so that's how the, the ball started getting rolling, he wanted, he was really pushing the cameras, and so on and so forth. But I wanted to echo a point Dr. Miller made at the last meeting, I believe it was the last meeting, is that technology in itself is not the solution, they are tools, you need to have a comprehensive plan of how they're going to be used, or it's a total waste of money. County goes through this over and over again with GPS with cameras, and, and they, they spend all this money on this equipment, they don't know how to use, they're not using it, so we just need to bear that in mind when going forward, that the cameras themselves are not the ultimate solution.
I guess my only comment is, is that when this came up, and I, you know, that was one thing, but you've also, incidents like Sandy Hook, I mean, school security is, is a topic, and I guess my concern was that we deferred this a year ago, until, you know, we're going to do a, a comprehensive plan, and now we're deferring that again, so I, I guess I would be, you know, does anybody seriously think we shouldn't consider cameras as part of school security?
Depends on what you mean by cameras, to me, I mean, I could see some external cameras, certainly I would never want a student wandering away and not have us know where they went.
I think, yeah.
But internally, this is, this is a problem for me, I, I wonder, does it...
Does it have value?
Suggest untrustworthiness of students and teachers, and what kind of climate are we creating? I taught in a building with cameras, and frankly, stuff happens anyway, it's not, it's mostly for catching who did it, I'm not sure it's that productive inside.
I think it becomes a question of scale, which I think this board should talk about, and doing it at the strategic planning committee meeting is the right time to do it, and it's only a month away.
And we can look into research, what the, what the research says, you know, you raise some research.
I do, and they address the Sandy Hook type of concerns, and they actually have some points that I'll forward this to everyone, so if you can read it.
Thanks, and I, I certainly agree, if you don't know how to use the equipment, and you don't have somebody monitoring it, what's the point?
But the point that Rachel made, that camera would have been helpful, if it was pointed out the building, because you would have known, did that kid go north on the street or did he go left?
Right, right.
And that would have been helpful to the police at that point.
Right.
If they had looked at the camera, I mean, if they, if they, by the time, if it wasn't clear how long the kid had been gone before they realized he was gone, or she was gone.
Well, they'd have to be parameters, who's going to store the data, and who's going to look at it, and who's going to analyze it, and how long are we going to keep the data? You know, we have to have some professional advice, I think, as well.
I, I agree with Rich, it's a, it's a question of scale, you know, we need to figure out what we're...
So, it sounds like there's a consensus then, to basically discuss this in detail as part of one of our strategic planning topics?
Yeah.
And if it, you know, if, if it's for reasons of security, I mean, I think there's some other issues with our buildings, with security, that could be added on to it. The district office door is right into central, I mean, there's a lot, if, if we're talking security and we're talking about, you know, portable...
It may not be the most effective.
Right.
Right, there are, there are a lot of issues of security.
Where does the facilities review by the architect stand, and how does that tie into facilities review of security? Are we do...
There really isn't an overlap. We, we talked with our architect firm about, and my own experience is that architects generally don't get into this topic, because it's, it's a, it's a building management topic, it's a, it's a security topic that architects kind of step away from. There are companies that specialize in security, that do have credentials, they come to the table saying, okay, I've worked for Homeland Security, I've worked for, you know, these law enforcement agencies, and we're giving you credit by space upon those types of professional backgrounds. It, it's kind of a specialty, and I think one of the things that this, you know, this board might look at is, is the prevalence of cameras in a lot of schools in terms of scaling, and these schools that are using cameras, are they really getting a benefit from them?
Right.
And where are those benefits? Can they be articulated? If they can't be articulated, then, then that's not what steps you want to follow.
Right, so we should look into the research that's been done on that, on that topic.
And the architectural thing you talked about, Mary Rose, you know, architects are going to be doing a 10-year life safety look, that's really what that's all about, I think maybe she was asking that part of the question.
Yeah, life safety relates to fire prevention, and...
Right, yeah.
Well, there's a, there's a...
In their wheelhouse.
You know, air quality, things that relate to HVAC and mechanical systems, and...
But they've also, we've talked on and off about space, you know, getting them involved in space assessment, and, and then, you know, maybe we've talked about throwing the security issue in there, and what you're saying is, we really, at least for security, need a specialist.
Yeah.
That makes sense to me.
I, I think the exterior cameras are, are very commonplace, and the clear justification for them is theft, you know, if, if you're, if you're monitoring your exits and, and things are leaving your building, you do have the ability to capture the video and try and conduct an investigation. I, I certainly am hearing that interior cameras are a really different topic, exterior cameras are more, you know, building envelope related, and who's coming and going, arriving and leaving the building with what.
So, let's take up that, that, these topics in the later meeting, basically, in the strategic planning meeting. Next item, there's new business, I don't think we have any new business, unless there's any, and then we have old business, I think there's just one item, which is the item that we pulled off of the consent agenda, which had to do with the summer equipment purchasing recommendations, and I think Mr. Sellers was going to tell us what the modification was on that item.
And you'll bear with me, I'm going to approach the board and hand out some materials.
If you need some help, David, I'd be happy to.
This, this material has already been put on the, the Board Book.
Do you like that? An extra.
It is a modification, when, when the original materials were distributed, I knew that there was a likelihood of a need for modification, I knew that I hadn't gotten closure.
And I'll be your attorney, I started. I did that very great. You just made something.
It's on camera. It's on camera.
I meant to do that.
Right, we don't need security here.
I knew that I didn't have closure on technology, and really that has changed. And so, Mr. Tofano, if you look at page three of three, under the Responsibility Code, TD, which stands for Tofano, he's, he's winnowed down the list to that which he feels very confident, or he's advocating that these be purchased so that everything is up and running for the opening of school. And that's what this list is all about. These are requests from the principals, other administrators, and the board's permission is being sought to go ahead and purchase a total of $157,830 of equipment.
And this was let, much less than the original number that was on the Board Book?
It's been chopped by $220,000. So, so really, these are pretty much those things that school districts typically get set up for the opening of school.
In the summer.
Right, and, and so, if you're going to equip a classroom with new desks, if you're going to get in some new teacher desks, if you're going to...
The library.
If you're going to do, library tables, if you're going to get some musical instruments, make an upgrade to a 50-year-old convection oven, you know, oven in a cafeteria, these are all things that you don't want to wait until after school is started. And so, I, I meant to talk about this in detail, and I forgot, on June 2nd, so that's, that's my error and oversight. So, I, we still need the board to, to look at these, express any concerns, but we definitely need some green lights.
Which turn up tonight?
On tonight.
Okay, okay.
And this is actually...
Because tomorrow, anything that the board is, is uncomfortable with, we can strike to the list, assuming that the majority of this, or all of it, you're comfortable with, then tomorrow, purchase orders can, can go forward. We do have some competitive locations in the works.
Okay, should we have a motion to approve the summer 2015 equipment, equipment purchasing recommendations as presented?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Juanita, could you call the roll, please?
I have a question, the AEDs that you have on this list, David, that's just one additional?
Correct.
Those are, you have those in each, in each school, right?
Yes.
Okay, so is that a replacement or an added one?
It's a, I think this is an additional one, but...
It says, it's an additional one, in hindsight.
Okay.
We, we have no choice when it comes to AEDs, these are...
Great, great.
And they have to be a certain, there's just going to have to be somebody's resistance between them, or you have to put another one in place.
Great.
They have to be, they have to be replaced, they have to be inspected, AED management is a, is a topic.
Any further comments or questions? Juanita, do you call the roll, please?
Rachel Morella?
Aye.
Linda Murphy?
Aye.
Rich Regan?
Aye.
Sherry Kleiber?
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia?
Aye.
And Jeff Miller?
Aye.
Motion is passed.
Next, we come to a second public comments period. Are there any public comments? Since there are no public comments, we'll announce the future meeting dates, did we make, did we pass a motion to cancel this?
Yes, July 7th, you, you voiced for canceling it.
So, the future meeting dates are July 21st, a regular business meeting at 6:30 in the Learning Resource Center. Is it 6:30 or 7:30? 7:30, is it?
6:30.
6:30, but then we...
Close session, 7:30 open.
7:30 is open session?
Right.
Okay, 6:30 closed session, 7:30 open session. August 4th, Committee of the Whole at 7:00 PM, and then August 18th, the regular business